Okay.
I do have another question, another clarification.
Yes, Alder Weary.
It came up earlier and we never really addressed it, so I thought it'd be good here. As written right now, under enforcement, you don't have a, any license with the city of any kind. Does not apply to you. Because there is no enforcement action.
It's not accurate to say that it doesn't.
No, now that the, um, the, the penalty still applies to a person anywhere in the city of Green Bay. It's just that if there is no license, then that person would not be subject to administrative procedures by the city.
The business?
Yes, thank you.
So the, the business might wear a mask perhaps, but the people inside, nothing would happen to the business.
We do not have jurisdiction over businesses that do not have a license with the city.
There you go. Thank you. That's a big exemption. Okay. I don't know if there's any other amendments or not, but I'll speak at the end if there isn't.
Any other amendments? Otherwise, we will move to final action here on, uh, on item one.
Motion to approve as amended.
Back end.
Motion made by Alder Scannell to approve as amended, seconded by, we'll go with Alder Stevens. Uh, so I do have a queue here. Pretty old, I'm guessing, but I'll go through it and see if, uh, if you have comments. Alder Dorf.
I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Thanks Alder. Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just kind of a, I guess, a final statement on the document as a whole. Again, I want to thank, uh, the members of the public. We had 500 plus, uh, people that had reached out with a wide spectrum of opinions and beliefs. And by no means was this an easy process for council tonight. And so I would also like to commend my, my colleagues for working through some of this process. Um, you know, politicians were responsible for holistic decisions. And it, and unfortunately it doesn't provide us the luxury for one dimensional arguments. Uh, an example of that would be, is this good for public health? I mean, we believe it is, we hope it is, uh, but there are countless other considerations to take into account. And I can assure you that a one dimensional decision would be much easier than what we've had before us tonight. On one side, we hear that we should let science make this decision. Yet there's little follow up with disretention, studies or facts to support what science should be following. Trust the science is a threatening statement intended to guilt you into supporting a mandate. Saying it loudly does not make it more true. If the science was conclusive, we wouldn't be having this debate. Even the World Health Organization and CDC have published articles suggesting masks have not conclusively proven to be effective. On the other end, we're told this is an infringement on our constitutional rights, liberties and freedoms. Here again, little evidence to suggest this is actually a violation of any constitutional authority, other than that of a personal independence. I personally will not let partisan politics dictate my conscience. You cannot trust extreme propaganda messaging from either side that uses extreme anecdotes meant to create shock and prove a point. A phrase on emotions, statements like, it's just a flu, or we're sending children to their deaths. Is meant to downplay or overreact to the existing situation, attempt to gain favor. And I do not support or bend to shame politics, such as if you don't do this, people will die. There's two reasons. Almost always, uh, represents the fringe. It absolves the citizenry of taking personal responsibility. I personally prefer data driven decision making, which requires multi dimensional impacts and authentically cares for public health on all layers. More so than anecdotes. A world surrounds us with risks. Ultimately, it is the responsibility of government to assess that risk and ensure a response is measured and does not overreach. If we overreach in response to every risk, we'll find ourselves living in an Orwellian world of complete government control. This isn't a debate about the effectiveness of masks, rather the role of government in enforcing their use. And here's ultimately what I know. Wearing a mask is not a vaccine, is not our last line of defense. If a defense at all suggesting this is what has prevented spread in other countries does not take into account other measures that have been deployed. There's no clearly defined exit strategy, other than the termination of the declaration of emergency. No goal, no outcomes. Very concerned about enforcement, as, as was talked about today. People are saying, do it like Milwaukee, but their health department is enforcing businesses and we don't have a health department, which means it falls to the police. They don't have the capacity to take this on, which means it won't be enforced. Why have a law you can enforce? It's begging for civil disobedience. And if we find that to be acceptable, then there should be no objection to removing the penalty for non compliance. And I, I commend my other, my peers for, uh, at least reducing it. If the general public has not embraced the health risks associated with this pandemic, is not willing on their own to take proper precautions. And we have either utterly failed as a government institution to communicate those risks, or perhaps the data presents another narrative that must carefully balance protected privilege with inconclusive health remedies. It's unsafe for us to find complete security in passage of disorderance. Voluntary participation will be far more effective in achieving our desired outcomes. We have options. We need to educate or we mandate. And last, regardless of how the vote falls in this issue, I call on all citizens in Green Bay to please stop blaming one another on this issue and asserting your opinion as superior. It's not, even if the vote falls the way that you'd like. There are differing opinions and that's okay. We ought to celebrate a democracy that provides for this. I don't want to see us dividing when we ought to be uniting and please voluntarily wear your mask.
Thanks Alder. Alder Galvin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would also like to thank the people that reached out to me. I had, uh, well over 400 emails, text messages, phone calls, instant messenger. I mean, uh, there's only too many, there's almost too many different venues to be reaching out to someone to try and keep track of them all. And all the, the different information that was given out to us. Uh, but I did try to keep track of it and I had, uh, constituents. I had 52 that wanted me to vote yes on this. I had seven that wanted me to vote no. Individuals that lived in the city. I had 102 that wanted a yes vote and 39 that wanted a no. Uh, I had individuals from outside the city, uh, many of our surrounding communities who either work or own property here or have businesses here. And, uh, of those I had 40 that live outside the city, uh, that wanted me to vote yes, and another 25 that wanted me to vote no. I had people from as far away as Minneapolis and California reach out to me. I had another 53 people I couldn't determine where they lived, uh, that wanted me to vote yes, and 67 that wanted me to vote no. Um, I've got family in town, nurses that work in hospitals here, um, and in other places. It's, it's a grave concern. And as the elected representatives, we're supposed to try to represent everybody, uh, in our district. And it's, as Alder Johnson very eloquently said, uh, it's not easy. It's, it's so dimensional. I heard a, a recent, uh, news article that said there's been over 6,000 papers, scientific papers, written on COVID and all its effects and remedies and everything else. And very few of those have actually been peer reviewed yet because there just hasn't been time. Uh, we're Americans and we want everything yesterday, and it makes it even more difficult for us. Uh, we have a, a country that moves very rapidly, economic very rapid. And the rise and fall of that is, is frightening to everybody. And so coming to a conclusion here wasn't easy. I tried to view as many of the papers and videos that I was sent, but, um, like it's been said here before, some go to the extremes on both sides. And, uh, I think, uh, I'm going to chime right in with Alder Johnson. We need to be better. We need to be kinder. We need to treat each other with respect and respect each other's opinions, no matter how this turns out in the end. And whether we agree with it or we don't agree with it, whatever we decide to do, we have to support as a community. It's only in that way that we're going to get through this and we're going to get better and we're going to get along with each other. Thank you.
It's Alder. Alder Brunet.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I want to acknowledge everyone who reached out to me. I, like the other Alder persons, received hundreds of comments and I returned as many as I could. And this is a tough situation. COVID is a horrible illness. And we have to remember that everyone has a very unique experience with this disease, this virus. There are, uh, parents who right now are not sure if they're going to be able to send their kids to, to school in just a month or two. And if that parent household has two working parents, they're terrified or very concerned about the prospect of losing a job in order to educate their children at home. We have family member, we have people in this community who have lost a family member or have a small child that has been diagnosed with COVID. A Facebook friend just posted something about a five year old who now has COVID. I have, uh, friends who have infants who have, you know, gotten it. So our hearts and prayers go out to everyone affected. There are also businesses, many of our friends and family and community members that, when this thing started, they, 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 they're losing their businesses. They're losing their income. Their worth as a human being feels like it's being diminished. And it's heartbreaking because everyone is touched by this. And what I fear as a society is that our divisions are growing. Growing over time, divided by partisanship and divided by hateful politics. And quite honestly, I, I very seldom raise my voice and get animated. Many of you know that. One thing that I get worked up about is when rights are taken away from the people. It's sort of a, a reaction to what we're facing. Okay. That is a very real thing. Just like I'm concerned about COVID. I'm concerned about the economic catastrophe we're facing, which has other consequences. I'm concerned about government overreach. So my frustration with this process was that the way that it was rolled out was not good government. That's my personal opinion. I don't think it was good government. It's not the way we should do it. So think about early days of COVID, when the governors, our governor and every governor across the state. And this is not meant to be a political statement. I'm not a partisan person. But Governor Evers and every other governor put all kinds of dictates on their residents. The governor of Michigan especially. And people didn't think that it made sense, many of these ideas. You know, not being able to buy gardening supplies or go fishing. These things don't make sense to people. So they go to their government, their representative body, and they say, please help us. Don't take our rights. Listen to common sense. So what you saw, what every member of this community saw today was that we were working through these issues as a committee, as a full city council, which actually should have been at a committee level. So all the frustrations we had at our governors and different representatives of our republic and our state governments, the things that didn't make sense. This ordinance does not make sense in some areas and it's perfectly fine to push back. And although I'm not a very animated person and I don't get worked up, I do get worked up when rights get taken from people. And I get worked up when government rushes things through without considering the people. This is the organization chart for the city of Green Bay. The very top, the voters, period. The top of this organization is the voters. We have to be very careful with this city council and we don't do anything, I'm, I'm raising my voice again. I apologize. But we have to do a better job and we have to understand as a city council, because our city government, not placing blame on anyone, but we botched the election. So many of us that are sitting in these seats at Zoom, our constituents, our citizens didn't get the opportunity to easily vote for us. We failed them. So therefore this very city government is pushing through something with very little public comment and input, not comment, but little public notice. This is a very tenuous relationship this council has right now, because there are members watching this in the public that did not get an opportunity to easily vote for any of us. So we have to listen to it. And I also believe in the consent of the governed. I want to tell you that in the beginning, when this hit the committee level, and, and I say this with all sensitivity. This COVID is a serious thing. I, I, I mean that. I, I, I take precautions. I protect my children. I protect people in my community.
We do have the five minute limit, so just.
So one last, one last comment. This idea of the consent of the governed, okay? I believe in the consent of the government. When this went to committee, it was 25 to two comments from the community and my constituents who voted against mandates of a mask. Then it, after that, then I got a lot of form letters and emails and all that matters. Every public comment matters. But today, since this was dropped on us yesterday, the people who I represent, two to one at least are against mask mandate. Or in this meeting alone, 11 were for, 39 were against. That's 78%. So the consent of the govern, we, we have to listen. The, 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 the community we represent doesn't feel that they were consulted in this decision. One day is not enough. On that alone, I'm going to vote against this. It doesn't mean I'm, I'm not taking COVID seriously, but there's a way and there's a precedent that we cannot set in the city of Green Bay. Thank you.
Alder Vanderlees.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I feel that our community has done a, a fine job as far as complying with social distancing, wearing their masks. We've got a lot of good information from the medical community. Some of it is inconclusive. Some people, you know, support masks, others are starchy against it, both on the medical side, you know, from the national level, right on to the local level. I can't support this. I, I think it's being, you know, way too fast as far as, you know, how it's been presented to the public. Most of the people that called me, I had, I would say, the, the vast number of them said, the business community particularly was not in favor of, of the ordinance. They just feel that it's overreach of our government, uh, locally. A lot, a lot of them thought that, you know, we should get on with issues that really are very important in other a- aspects of, of city government. Uh, this is, you know, it's not really being welcomed by most of the people in the community. You heard all the people that called in tonight, people that called, called my home. Uh, they said they didn't support it. They thought the, the government's overreach and, uh, I, I can't support it. It, it's just, uh, I, I think it's going to create a hardship on the, on the local businesses, which are already struggling already. This shouldn't be just a slam dunk, you know, a couple of days, you know, we, we talked about it a little bit and then, then we already voted and we got it into law. I, I feel that the community is, is done a good job and, and we don't need this ordinance. I'm, I'm not going to support it. And, and that's, that's the word I heard from most of my constituents. Some support it, but the vast majority did not support this ordinance and I'm not going to support it. And, and I feel that, uh, I, I understand that, you know, COVID is serious and, uh, but I, I think that, you know, this mask ordinance i- is not needed. So that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thanks Alder. Alder LeFave.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I will support this ordinance because for me, it all is about our health and wellbeing. And that's exactly what our duty is. The health and the wellbeing of our citizens. Just about, if you look at our ordinances, all our ordinances basically are for the health and the wellbeing of our citizens. That's why we put these ordinances in place. Uh, I want to mention something. I have asthma. I wear my mask wherever I go. I feel it's my duty. I have a, I have a responsibility to protect other people. It's not just myself I'm protecting. I'm protecting others because I have no idea. If I meet someone else, I have no idea what their condition is, what they're dealing with. I have no idea. So I need to be proactive to protect them. That's my main duty, to protect others. Also, uh, someone had mentioned about, uh, the one where, oh, your blood pressure goes way up. Well, actually, I've been wearing the mask wherever I go, doctor's office. Usually when I go to doctor's office, something, you know, you get kind of nervous and usually your blood pressure goes up a little bit. Well, guess what? My blood pressure's been perfect. I'm wearing the mask. I've had it on for a half an hour. And I'm fine. So these people that talk about the mask is going to be dangerous and it's going to give you all these conditions. It hasn't affected me. That's my personal opinion on that. Okay? What I've experienced. And then I want to mention, um, our nephew called. And he talked to us, uh, yesterday. And he mentioned that his sister has a good friend who lives in Canada. Canada is nowhere where we are. You know why? They put the four things in place. They shut some places down where there's too much social gathering. Where they couldn't wear a mask. They put the mask mandates in place. They social distanced. And people were really good about washing their hands, disinfecting. They followed the rules. They didn't have a big ruba about this. People did it. They did it because they wanted their country to get over this and to get better. And they are better. They're better than we are, much better. Their businesses are opening. Because they really, their curve is down. And if you look, if you, if you really watch the news, have you looked at our curve? We're way up. You look at Europe, down. I think even Brazil is down now. All these places are down. Why? A lot of them did. They put the social distancing in. They put all the things that you're supposed to be doing in place. The people followed it. We're not. So I'm going to vote for this. But then also, the city, I want to mention, the city is doing everything they can for these businesses. They really are hurting. I understand they are hurting. It's the COVID that's causing the hurt for all these businesses. But we are also, now there's a new, there's another proposal that we're going to vote on tonight, opening up the parking lot downtown between Walnut and Adam Street. Where people, where they can put up, uh, they're going to put up tables and put planters and some, it's going to be socially distancing, but the restaurants downtown can now have their customers getting their food and sitting there. Because we know that it's, it's more dangerous to be indoors without a mask. So this is for people who do not feel comfortable. There's a lot of, a lot of restaurants are having trouble because people are not feeling comfortable going in. I will not go in a restaurant and eat inside. I will not. Because the air circulation circulates this.
You kidding me?
Okay. And then, one final thing I want to mention too. I did read all those, all those emails I received. And unfortunately, some did not identify if they're from my district or not. So I apologize for that.
We have that, the time limit, just be aware. So.
Okay. I just want to quick say, yes, I want to thank everybody. And I did not get to respond to a lot of them. I'm sorry. There was just too many. There were like 500 or so. And mine were kind of, uh, the yes for this was a little bit more than the no. Of the ones I received. And a lot of them did identify not in my district. That's one thing I want to say. And last thing, I just want to say, please, everybody be civil. If you don't want to wear one, I guess, don't, don't attack people for not wearing it. Just let that up to the businesses. Say, please, would you, you know, would you please do it?
Thank, thanks Ald.
You know, let's all be civil, civil to each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Steyer.
Alder Gerlock.
Alder Steyer.
Just very briefly, I just want to say that, um, virtually everyone who spoke in the meeting this evening had already contacted me, either by email or phone. And, um, so I had, uh, 68% in favor of the mandate and 32% not in favor of the mandate. And, um, this is certainly not, um, a perfect ordinance. This is certainly not a perfect plan. But we have no choice. If we're going to cut the legs out from under this virus and save our community, this is the best option we have right now. I would say that, uh, we should look to Taiwan, who has 24 million people, and they've had seven die of COVID-19. And their two messages they have to the rest of us are, number one, make sure healthcare is accessible and affordable to everyone. And number two, wear masks. So we're doing the right thing. We're not doing it perfectly. It takes everybody to make it work. I do not believe it's going to, that everyone is going to follow suit and, and, uh, do their part, but we're going to do the best we can. So of course I will support it. It's the best we can offer and we have to move quickly.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Steyer.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I mirror what many of the other Alders have said, as far as the number of folks that have called and, on this issue. And, you know, I shared the Protection and Policy Committee and we did have a split vote last week. Uh, we had many, many people speak on that matter. And, um, I think one of the reasons I voted the way I did was the fact that I feel that Brown County needs to be a leader here in the, in the sense of what we're looking at. Uh, there are 24 communities in Brown County. We are one of the communities. And, um, they are meeting on Thursday, their Human Services Committee, and they're going to be discussing this issue. I really wish we could have waited till that happened before we would take a vote. If I do not vote for this ordinance, it's not because I don't feel that there should be an ordinance somewhere down the line. But I just feel that the timing was such that, you know, our, our hand was forced. We don't have a whole lot of time, like Alder Weary's mentioned. We don't have a whole lot of time to look at this. And we were doing committee work at council, which really is tiring. It's taken a long, long time. But the citizens are looking at us. They are watching us and they are our boss. So I, I concur with that. I think the fact that, um, you know, I, I thought about things like reiterate, reiterating by what authority the city has to enact this ordinance. And I know that, um, Attorney Chavez said for the health and safety. I understand that a bit, but I still have some questions about that. I, I, I was worrying about potential lawsuits that might crop up, uh, for various reasons. One fear that I had for Green Bay having a mask ordinance, it may drive customers, um, that shop in Green Bay to purchase outside of the city of Green Bay, which can also affect our businesses. The fact that we have 24 communities, I think we need to make it consistent. That's why I'm looking to the county. Uh, the difficulty for police to enforce this, um, it, it would be difficult. So I, I go for what Alder Johnson brought forward, at least to make it a little more soft on that end. Uh, it would be difficult for businesses trying to enforce mask ordinances. So, um, again, I think the, the citizens that called, they were very much engaged. And I think part of, part of being an Alder, you know, we're, we've been here for almost six hours now. And, uh, I'm re-energized because the citizens did speak. And initially at, at my, at our committee, uh, it was heavily against, uh, the ordinance. And then there was a callback from the folks that wanted the ordinance. And there were many, many emails and some of them are form letters, which are fine. But I would rather see the individual letters that are personally written and they give the reasons why. I had more deference toward those. So I think that, um, you know, I think, uh, all, all in all, it was probably a pretty split vote for me over four, having 400 folks. It was pretty, pretty evenly matched. Very heavy against the ordinance initially, very heavy for it over the last number of days. And tonight, like Alder Burnett said, it was like 39 to 11. So then again, if we heard it tomorrow, we might have the four, the people that want to vote for it testify. So it, there are a lot of things here, but I, I would, I would really defer to see the county more involved in this. They have a health department. We do not. Uh, I would, they have a chapter 37.12 that deals with this. And they have different, a different penalty system looking at this. Uh, the Wisconsin Counties Association Attorney, Andy Phillips is looking at this. He's going to deter, have a determination within seven to 10 days. Supervisor Bruski did speak with Brown County Corporate Council, Corporation Council. They have HEMRI and they're getting, gathering data on this as well. So I would suggest you tuning in either at 5:00 or 5:30. I'm not sure when the meeting is on Thursday, to, uh, weigh in on that. And I, I'm going to, I'm going to lean that way initially. And, uh, if we have to adjust ourselves later, I'll do it at that time. Thank you.
So that's all I have in the queue here.
I'll speak.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Or, or whoever, whoever you want to pick. Yeah, thanks. Well, uh, I think the die is cast on this one. At least we have a whole agenda to go through yet. We have that to look forward to, right? Get your caffeine. Good Lord, what a, such a divisive issue, you know, um. Didn't need to, didn't need to be this way, really. We could have stressed education instead of mandate. Educate, not mandate. There was a registered nurse, I think, who emailed everybody on that and it just stuck with me. Educate, not mandate. And that came from an RN. So I'm, I think there's a lot of feeling that people are hoping this isn't all for political show. You know, who cares the most? I think it's called virtue signaling. Sure the heck hope that this is not what that's about. As I've stated earlier, and then, and everybody else said, we've got so many emails and calls. I haven't had that many since we discussed, I think, roundabouts on military and Mayor Schmidt's garbage to energy scheme. I think you all remember those. Mark like, Mark Steyer likes the energy one. I was on vacation last week, came back and it was like a thunderstorm. And I, I have luckily over twenty years managed to get six hundred, seven hundred email addresses of people in my district. So I sent out a question real quick on people's opinions and I say I'm disappointed. I only got about a hundred and thirty responses so far. It's only been a day or two, but for me, it was seventy to sixty opposed. Pretty close, you know, uh, opposed, but not by much, you know? Uh, it would have been nice to hear from more people, certainly to have more time. As a lot of people have said, the people who spoke from the public and other alders, the science, you know, seemingly changing daily. I mean, we've had studies that have been there for twenty years and then all of a sudden just this year, they're like, oh, you know what? We said for twenty years, yeah, totally disregarded. So I've been sent and all of you have so much incredible information. I've learned a lot, actually, in the last couple of days. So I'm very appreciative of those who've sent it. Being anti-mandate does not mean you're anti-mask. And I'm not against masks. I am for individuals and businesses making their own choice. So on this, I'm going to choose liberty. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. As I said, uh, no more speakers left in the queue here. So with that.
Aldo Person Dax has her hand up. Corpus Dax.
Thank you, Aldo. Aldo Corpus Dax.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to thank everyone who also contacted me via email, texts, Facebook Messenger, uh, calls regarding the face mask mandate. Um, you know, my apologies that wasn't able to get to respond to all of those, but please know that I read your emails, um, listened to your calls, read your texts. You know, strong sentiments were expressed on both sides. I've had citizens, healthcare personnel, um, business owners, first responders, all express their opinions for and against. Um, for every argument against, there's an argument for and vice versa. What it comes down to for me is that I don't want to see our city, our county, our state head in the direction of other states that we've seen um, who have either reopened too soon and are now having an uptick. You know, I was out in New York a couple of weeks ago where they mandated face masks a couple of months ago. And what I saw there was, it, it, what I experienced there was that it didn't seem as big of an issue for, um, people to be wearing the face mask. I mean, it was, it almost seemed like a non-issue. It was what, what was expected by everyone. They were hit hard early on and they took the measures that they needed to in order to turn that around. And they have turned that around. Some of those states that were hit really hard have been able to turn that around because of the, um, actions the governors took. I really don't want to see Wisconsin turn into Florida, what's happening down in Florida. We are seeing an uptick in COVID cases here. Um, in Brown County. I absolutely think that this should be coming from the state, if not the county. But neither of them have taken any action so far. And it, I honestly don't know, would county be taking this up if Green Bay hadn't taken it up? Or would they have just kind of left it and just, you know, we have citizens who are looking to us as, as alders to take action. We're begging us to take action, not just citizens, but also business owners who, who have reached out and said, you guys need to do something at a local level because county's not doing anything, state's not doing anything. I do not take this vote lightly whatsoever. But I am going to support the mandate. I am going to support the mask mandate. Thank you.
Any final comments? From alders? Seeing none, we will go to the board. This is on the item as amended with, uh, on multiple occasions. And just a, a note on process, it's sort of like a double vote. We've got to take this up uh, under committee of the whole, and then we got to do it again on resolution. So whatever your vote is here should be the identical vote under resolutions.
Aldo Steyer?
Am I, am I on, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Uh, I vote no.
Thanks, Aldo. Those succeed seven to five. Now we're on to item U two, consideration with possible action on the resolution extending the state of emergency with the city of Green Bay COVID-19 response.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Aldo Scanell, seconded by Aldo Dorf. Any discussion?
Yep.
Aldo Wery, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allow me a moment here to, to adjust. We're still on committee of the whole number two, right?
Yes.
All right. I think we can can stop now with the state of emergency. I think we can handle things well enough at committee level. And if needed, emergency city council meetings to avoid, uh, you know, getting these kind of last minute things like this. I, I think the council needs to be more involved. It's time to end the emergency. Otherwise, when are we going to end it? I think this council seems pretty content with letting you have it. All the way, why don't we just do it till the end of our term? It'll make it a lot easier on us. You can be emergency mayor till, uh, end of our term. So I, I'm against it. At some point, this has to end and we have to get more involved. I'm against it.
Thanks, Aldo. Additional comments?
I have a comment. Yeah, I'm against it. I, we can meet quickly, even this ordinance, if I'm correct. When, when does it take effect? Is it what date? What's that?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. So this is a perfect example where today we met. This was put on using the mayor's emergency powers given to him by the, uh, by the proclamation or whatever it's referred to. There's nothing that we need to have acted upon that we can't meet quickly as a council. So it, there's no need for it. Last time we voted nine to three. And it's time for the council to reassert um, their authority on the public policy, policymaking body and duties of our city government. Thank you.
Aldo. Other comments?
I have one.
Aldo Dorf, go ahead.
Part of the ordinance we just passed said, says, this ordinance is hereby repealed immediately upon termination of the city of Green Bay's declaration of emergency. I see these comments as a ploy to just simply overturn an ordinance that was voted on by council. So I'm definitely in favor of keeping this emergency order in place. Thank you.
Aldo Vanderlist.
I think that we can remove the emergency declaration. I, I think the, the city's doing a good job right now. We don't need it. I, I think that the city council can handle whatever comes forward. And, uh, I think that way we get more communication amongst the alders. Without, without, uh, we could call a meeting quickly. So I, I believe that, uh, the emergency declaration should be ended. Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo. Aldo LeFave.
Uh, yes, I want to, uh, I was going to say what Aldo Dorf mentioned. This is a roundabout way to kill the mask amendment. Uh, so no, and I think if we felt strongly that we do need a mask ordinance, then I think we are in a state of emergency. We need to keep it in place. Um, but I got a question. I did not hear what the vote was on the, um, mask ordinance.
It was seven.
I didn't hear.
Yes, seven to five.
Seven to five. Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments?
Your Honor.
Oh, Scanell.
Yeah. Uh, I love how those who are saying the council can do its job and committee did what they could to subvert the committee. I mean, look, if, if we had followed committee process and, and the committee had done its job and not thwarted what the, uh, ultimately the council supports, which was for staff to come up with an ordinance, the mayor wouldn't have had to use his emergency powers. I hardly see how the mayor has been abusive or, or, or onerous with his, uh, emergency powers. And to say that we've given up our authority, that's nuts. What? That's disingenuous. We have not given up an ounce of authority. Everything he does has to come before us. So that I don't know what, that's just not right. That's, that's not right. That's not true. And, uh, so I fully support, as long as we're in this emergency, that the mayor has the authority to take action and then we will take action upon his action when we meet. So, uh, I, I don't understand this at all and I don't support it. I, I mean, I support the, the, the continuing with the emergency. Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo. Aldo Galvin.
Your Honor, I support extending the emergency. I would hope the reason there alders that are against extending it, they're not doing this just to defeat this, uh, this ordinance we just passed. Um, although I would like to have some kind of a process in place so we can start discussing what ending the emergency order looks like. You know, what the parameters or some of the metrics might be. So that, so that we can start seeing what, what, what exactly means, you know, I mean, it's not like we're looking for an armistice with COVID. You know, which would be great, easy. Um, but I, I, I think we have to have some idea in mind as we move forward so we can push towards that, that objective and, uh, get things back to normal with our city government. Thank you.
Yeah, just on that point real quickly, Aldo, I think that's, that was really well made. Uh, there's been, you know, a bit of discussion internally about gating criteria. Um, and in a dis, a conversation that I had with, uh, Mayor Boyd down in DePere. I think there's, there's a bit that we could learn from them, given the fact that they have a public health department. So, uh, so certainly I can commit to you that, uh, that we're going to work on developing that gating criteria with some assistance, you know, maybe from Brown County Public Health, uh, but also from the experience down in DePere.
Thank you. And I guess it really would be nice to see Brown County Health establish some kind of a presence in the county and, and be giving us out some more information at these meetings so that we could have some, something that can help formulate what's happening in, on a county level. Um, other than having us, uh, plow the field for everybody to get things going here. So, thank you.
Mayor, could I speak?
First Aldo Vanderlist, then Aldo Steyer.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the big emergency? Let me ask you that. What is the emergency? Why don't we get things moving along? Most businesses opened up. You know, most of the businesses are moving along. I think the city hall should be opened up. I, I think it's time that we, you know, take, take a hold of things and, and move forward. You know, wearing masks, we're social distancing. I, I think we should be back on track, you know? Serving our citizens, doing our jobs. And, and most of the businesses I'm affiliated with, they didn't skip too many beats. And I, I feel that, uh, it would be wise for the city to get back into the, to the realm of dealing with the public on a, on a personal basis. And that means in-person type basis. And, uh, that's my thoughts. I, I think we should move forward on that, not wait too long. I think we waited long enough. It's time to go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo. Aldo Steyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I, I agree with the fact that, you know, we, we have these, um, coming forward almost on a monthly basis. And I think we're getting to a point where we'd like to see this end, but uh, with that being said, I really am looking to the county to give us that information like Aldo Galvin brought forward. You know, I think if we had more information to look at, to understand, to study, to focus on with this being said, then I think we could make a, a, a better determination to just say, look, let's move on. So I'm, I'm leaning that way for now and I will probably attend that meeting on Thursday for the county. I really want to gather some data. There's a lot out there all the way around and we could read till we're blue in the face. And I think a lot of us have. So I, at this time, I will support this. But I'm looking to hopefully move this out of the way sooner.